7 o'clock, I will call the regular common council meeting to order. We do need a roll call, please.
Mayor Wiesa.
Here.
Nibone.
That doesn't count.
Corlettic.
No, we're doing a council roll call, so the clerk will do that. Thanks, Trish, though.
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nabel.
Here.
Zerazua.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Slawinski.
Here.
Nibone.
Here.
Dugan.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
And Morrow is excused.
Morrow is excused. And we have a quorum, so we are able to conduct business. We will stand in recess until the completion of the special board of public works. Reconvene the regular common council meeting and call it to order at 7:11. We need to get a few things squared away, right? Where's Director Estruski? So I brought a portable speaker. If you want to plug that in in preparation for the presentation, you can just plug it into the headphone jack, and then there's a switch on the back that just turns it on. And let me get my notes organized here. So we already have the roll call, so item number two is the salute to the flag, so if you would please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I never know if I should salute some of that.
Thank you very much for coming. I wanted to point out that Rob Podak, our drop-off attendant, who has been with the city for over 30 years, is going to be retiring. His last day at drop-off will be effective June 1st, so if you use our yard waste drop-off, stop by and say goodbye to Rob. We wish him well in his endeavors. With that, I'm going to take the rest of my closing remarks and ask that we take a moment to honor the memory of Mitch Lungard, the Appleton firefighter who was murdered in the line of duty. So I'm going to ask that we take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I know some of our firefighters and firefighters from all across the state are attending the memorial service that is taking place today, so our thoughts are with them. Item number three is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing must register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council on a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by the mayor. Kelly was handing around slips of paper like this. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on our agenda or the non-agenda item that has not yet filled out a piece of paper? Okay, then we will move on to item number four, which is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on an agenda, a non-agenda item, for up to three minutes. And we have, are these in order?
Yes.
One person. Bob Gifford. Name and address for the record, sir. You'll have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, Bob Gifford, 517 Field Creston, New York.
You don't need to be that close to the microphone.
Okay. District 10, Representative on the County Ward. What I have is a resolution. I would like local governments to demand on the Wisconsin Legislature for re-enabling regional transit authorities. So it goes like this.
Mr. Gifford, can you either move the microphone a little further away from you or step back so there's about at least six inches between you and the microphone?
I'm yelling, huh?
It's getting fuzzy because you're so close.
Whereas in 2009, the Wisconsin Legislature passed legislation including in Act 28 enabling the formation of RTAs, Regional Transit Authorities, complete with the power of taxation necessary to fund startup and operations. Whereas in 2011, as part of Act 32, the Legislature passed legislation disabling the same RTAs with no rational explanation or narrative for undoing what had been done two years earlier. Whereas, the Wisconsin Association of Mobility managers, RAM, said in their 2016 legislative priorities, Wisconsin is the only Midwest state without enabling legislation to create these authorities. RTAs are quasi-governmental entity that provides a governmental structure for a unified transportation system and has taxing authority, therefore offering a funding alternative to property taxes. Whereas, RAM added, RTAs allow for regional and comprehensive look at transportation. They encourage connectivity and a multimodal approach since the planning takes place with one body for a whole region. A multimodal and coordinated system improves the mobility, connectedness, and quality of life for those who are unable to drive themselves, particularly older adults, individuals with disabilities, and those with low income. Whereas, RAM further noted medical centers, employers, job centers, educational facilities are very often regional in nature. Why should transportation be any different? Whereas, RAM concluded their 2016 document, transportation systems are part of the infrastructure that helps people get to jobs, medical appointments, and remain active and engaged. Where there are strong systems and meaningful mobility choices, there are strong communities. People want to live and work in these communities and are seeking them out. So whereas our county places great importance on our system of mobility for the population most in need, and whereas our county places high value on the principles of sustainability, and whereas lack of mobility for low-income workers, retired persons, disabled people is a factor contributing to their lack of sustainability, therefore this city council, in this case, calls upon the Wisconsin Legislature to pass legislation once again enabling RTAs in Wisconsin and making an appropriation to fund such. Further, there be no limitations placed on the number of such authorities barring duplication of services or overlaps. Further, that legislative obstacles to proceeding using renewable energy completely for such RTAs is to be removed from the statutes, keeping in mind further tightening of petroleum and natural gas supplies in the near future. Further, and finally, that planning agencies make the creation and link-up of these RTAs into one seamless working statewide system a top priority. So this is just a project I've been working on for a couple of years.
Thank you, sir.
Going to take it to as many local governments as I can.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
That exhausts item number four. I would, however, now like to go to item number five and invite up Leah. And is Emma here, too?
Yes.
I can barely see those pigtails. If we could have Leah and Emma come up to the front lectern. May is the month of Memorial Day, and as is tradition here on the Stevens Point Common Council, we have our poppy princess and junior poppy princess to come up and present them with a proclamation, and Leah is going to tell us about Flanders Fields.
Good evening, common council members and members of the Stevens Point community. My name is Leah Stiff, and I am representing the American Legion Auxiliary Bar and Scrimner Unit 6 as the 2019 poppy princess. Along with me today is Emma McDowell, who's serving as the junior poppy princess. Many of you may be familiar with a poppy princess from the past, as dozens have come before me and stood in front of you, reciting in Flanders Field and asking you to wear a poppy to support our veterans. But today, I want to take a moment to tell everyone about the American Legion Auxiliary Program and how you can do, how you can help local veterans. The poppy program began in 1921. It was the American Legion's auxiliary way to carry out the promise of Moina Michael to keep the faith. Moina Michael is known as the poppy lady. While working as a local, at the local YMCA supporting the war effort, Moina was given a copy of the Lady's Home Journal, dogged air, air, on a page featuring the poem "We Shall Not Sleep" by Lieutenant Colonel John McCray. The poem was later renamed in Flanders Field. In Flanders Field, the poppies blow between the crosses row on row, the marker place and in the sky the lark still bravely singing fly. Scarcish herd amid the guns below, we are the dead short days ago. We live felt dawn sunset glow, loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flanders Field. Take up your quarrel with the foe, to you from failing hands we throw. The torch be yours to hold it high, if ye betray faith with us who die, we shall not sleep through poppies grow. In Flanders Field by Lieutenant Colonel John McCray. Moina was deeply moved by the last stanza and wrote her own poem in response, "We Shall Keep the Faith." Oh, you who sleep in Flanders Field, sleep sweet to rise anew. We caught the torch you threw, and holding high we keep the faith with all who die. We cherish to the poppy red that grows on fields where voler led. It seems to signal to the sky that blood of heroes never die. But led's luster to the red of the flower that blooms above the dead in Flanders Field. And now the torch on poppy red, we wear and honor our dead, of our dead. Fear not that ye have died for naught, we'll teach the lesson that ye wrought in Flanders Field. We ask you to help us to keep the faith by wearing a poppy. But we all know that just wearing a poppy isn't enough. How can you make a difference? Along with distributing poppies, members of the American Legion Auxiliary, young and not quite so young, collect donations to build our poppy fund. The American Legion is congressly, congressionally chartered organization. Our poppy funds can only be used to support veterans. 20% of the funds raised locally are sent to the Department of Wisconsin Poppy Fund, but the rest of the money is used to help veterans in our community. Money is distributed by veterans, to veterans caused or directly to veterans in need. It could be held with food, rent, utilities, childcare, transportation, holiday gifts, to name a few. This year, please consider helping us grow the poppy fund, or maybe you'd even like to join the American Legion Auxiliary. Thank you for helping us keep the faith.
Thank you both very much. I know sometimes it gets a little nerve-wracking here, getting in front of a bunch of people on that camera and radio and everything, but I know you saw this before it because you both were in my office when we signed this, so I'm going to leave this with you, and I thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you, and have a good night. Now we have another presentation, and this is by the Portage County Suicide Prevention Coalition. I would ask those members to come forward, and we have a PowerPoint, I believe. We're going to try and, I hope this is going to work.
I have to talk in front of them.
I have to go to the lectern, please.
Okay, I can probably talk without this. I probably really don't need a mic, but I'll use it anyway. My name is Michelle Nelson. I am the Chair of the Portage County Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Awareness Coalition, and we have just a brief presentation that we wanted to provide tonight to the city council. I don't have a nice written-out thing. I just kind of was going to just go with whatever I had. But May is also Mental Health Awareness Month, and we were able to get a video done this month that we're very proud of. Travis Cook from the Fire Department worked very diligently on getting this done. One of the things that I think the video shows is how hard and collaboratively we are working as law enforcement, EMS, Fire Department, law enforcement, mental health agencies, and just all together on looking at suicide prevention and mental health awareness, and we're working together, and we see it as definitely something that is a priority here in Portage County. And I think, well, let's just go ahead and show the video.
The Suicide Prevention and Mental Health Awareness Coalition of Portage County is made up of compassionate professionals in our community that provide resources for suicide prevention, support for lost survivors, and hope for those who may be struggling with mental health issues.
Strength!
Courage!
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 Support!
Support!
Safety!
Advocates to stop the stigma. Be the voice, provide the strength, give the support.
As you can see, it's not a very long video. One of the things that we're hoping to be able to utilize it is to get it out on Facebook and different things like that, so that people can see it as something that, once again, that we see as very important and that we're taking seriously and that we're working together to provide people with that they do have the courage, they have the support, the different things that we're pointing out in the video. Also, we're trying to encourage that and get across the various, the hope line, the crisis line, the prevention line, if people do need the help, that the information is there, that they can reach out, that they can call the various numbers that are going to be on there. So we do want to try to get it out in the community, Portage County, as much as we can. This is something that, you know, various members, as it did say as the video was going on, are members of the coalition and continue to be. I forgot about, obviously, the school district as part of that. We also do have other various members in the community that are part of our coalition, and we are trying to work very hard on suicide prevention as well as, as well as mental health awareness. Portage County, unfortunately, we rank very high in our statistics as far as completed suicides. Last year, we had 10 completed suicides. So far this year, we have had three people that have died by suicide. So we are trying to do what we can as far as looking at various things in the community to reach out to people for suicide prevention, but then also the mental health awareness piece. We're trying to decrease the stigma. We're trying to do what we can so that people know that we do have, or that they have the support, that the resources are there, that different things are available, and that, like in the video shows, that we have law enforcement, we have EMS, we have everybody that is part of that. Do you guys want to say something? Or you want me to just talk?
You're fine.
Okay. But I think it's great that, like I said, we have all these entities that can come together and really be a part of this, that, once again, that all of us are working very hard at doing this and trying to provide the right resources, the right information, and getting it out there to the people.
Thank you very much. If someone wanted more information, where could they go?
As far as if they just want more information in regards to the coalition, there is our website, which is Suicide Prevention. Trying to think what the website is.
I want to get that posted on our website tomorrow.
We will do that. And obviously, if you do know somebody who is looking for help or somebody that is struggling themselves, you know, definitely encourage them to utilize these resources. We do have wonderful resources that are available in our community as well. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Estruski, for running the AV.
That's what I was going to ask.
Item number seven is the consent agenda. I had a request to poll the item number two from the Finance Committee meeting of April 16th. It is permission for the Community Development Department to apply for a Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant. So we're going to poll that item for further discussion. Is there anything else at the Alders? Alder Dalton?
Item 3A from the Plan Commission.
Item 3A, Plan Commission, 3A, 1748 Water Street for a easement for TDS MetroCom. Is that correct, Alder?
Correct.
Okay, pull that. Is there anything else? Okay, then I would entertain a motion. Alder Phillips?
I would like the last item, the mayoral appointment of the new Parks Director, polled, please.
Last item, mayoral appointment of the new Parks Director. That will be polled. Again, anything else? Alder Phillips?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda with those items polled.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Dalton. Any discussion? We have a few, hang on, let me just go through these. It's polled, 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 polled. Okay, so we have some people registered to speak, but those are on items that have already been polled. With that, if you are in favor of the consent agenda with those three items polled, you'll vote yes, and if you are opposed, you'll vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Phillips?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
That is approved. The first polled item will be the actions of the Plan Commission meeting from May 6th, item number three, which was a request from the city of Stevens Point for easements to TDS MetroCom for the purpose of constructing underground cable and substation at the following properties. The one being polled is 1748 Water Street. Alder Dalton, you have the floor.
I just would like, and I wasn't able to make the Plan Commission meeting for this item, but in watching the discussion, I noted that Director Lemke mentioned that Telcom has a substation near the water tower, and I'm wondering, a lot of the discussion revolved around whether or not the secure access would be a problem for TDS, and so I'm wondering if Telcom also has access to their substation.
Director?
I might have been a little hard to understand or something in the video. What I was referring to is that we have a lot of telco companies, Sprint, AT&amp;T, stuff like that, that are resident inside of our fenced-in area at the water tower, and actually one of their bigger complaints is the after-hours inability to get in there without paying to do so because it takes our staff. It wouldn't, and not only that, but those are all people who are residents on the tower for cellular purposes, and this is not one of those applications. So they don't need to be in there to get up the leg of the tower.
Does that answer your question, Alder?
Yeah, I guess I still feel like that in working and developing good working relationships with these businesses and that I would be supportive of amending the construction of the substation to within that and granting TDS access for their, their substation.
One more time.
I would be, I would like to amend the easement to construct the substation within the secured area of the city.
Okay, so you're making a motion to amend the minutes and actions of the Plan Commission?
Correct.
Okay. Don't know, does that easement have to go back, then, the amended motion? Does that have to go back to the Plan Commission?
I believe it would, and we don't even know if they're willing to construct it within that area. I'm not sure they wish to construct it inside that area, but we'd have to draw up a new easement document in order to put it in a different place. There certainly could be a motion to direct staff to examine that option. I think it's already been considered. Certainly Joel can comment on that.
And I believe it has, but we'll let the director comment to that. So before we officially accept that motion and ask for a second, Director, I know representatives aren't even here to see if it would work, but I believe we talked about that option with TDS, either Director Lemke or Director Badun, whichever one works, about constructing it in that, and I thought we kind of covered that at Plan Commission, but maybe we could recap. I don't want you to speak for TDS, but just what we found.
Sure. And yeah, and the reason actually for not entering within that fenced-in area is really has to do with what our, that is, the city's future plans are for that parcel of land relative to the storage of engineering vehicles, as well as other equipment and pertinences that we have there, streetlights and whatnot. Putting them on the other side of there would limit us in our ability to store equipment that we do already, so it would be our preference to keep them out of there, as well as if we do secure that area, we don't want them necessarily in there for the reasons that Director Lemke stated. It makes things a little bit more difficult.
Okay. Alder Dalton, do you still wish to make that motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second for that motion? Second by other person, Nabel. Discussion. This puts us at a disadvantage, not us, TDS, at a disadvantage because they're not here to talk about why they do not want to be in there, as well as why the city doesn't want them in there. You've heard that part. Alder Nabel?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the reasons why I agree with pulling this at this time is that the neighbors that would be right next door to this had some questions that were not answered at the meeting, and they've also sent a letter or an email out to all of us, asking a few questions that I think they have, they should get those answers first before we do make that decision. One was, does the substation interfere with existing radio, television, internet communication? Does the substation emit any annoying audible sounds or any high-frequency sounds that could affect pets or wildlife in the area? And also, what kind of, receive any assurances that the substation will be safe? None of that had been provided to these people, and I think that that's justifiable for them to ask for this.
Okay, I believe we talked about that, had representatives from TDS talk about at least some of those things at the meeting. Of course, again, we're at a disadvantage because we didn't talk about this, or the directors didn't get notification ahead of time so we could have materials prepared for the meeting. But directors, do either of you two recall, I'm pretty sure we had one of the directors or representatives from TDS come up there and address the one resident's concern in regards to, how will this, will it be noisy? Will it affect radio and TV? And I think those two were answered. As far as whether it's safe, I guess I'd ask for a definition of what that means. But directors, do you have any recollection?
Safe in what regard?
Any radiation?
No, I mean, the equipment inside something like this is similar to what we'd have, although in a slightly different scale, inside a regular server room in any one of our offices. It's switching equipment. There's bound to be some, maybe battery backups or something like that in there in case of a power outage. Pretty, pretty run-of-the-mill type of equipment, and not to mention, it's a, it's a pretty solid enclosure. I honestly don't expect there to be any, any real inconveniences from the thing being there, to be honest with you. It's a pretty, pretty nice-looking building. It's hard to even call it a building. It's a, it's an enclosed.
And what is the size again? Because I saw two different sizes for that at one time. It was supposed to be a smaller one, and then I saw something for a 20 by 20.
The size of the easement is the bigger dimension.
The 20 by 20?
The, the structure inside of it is 8 by 10?
8 by 10, yes.
That helps clear that up a little bit more, too. Thank you.
Okay. Alder Nibone, you had a comment?
Just for clarification, could, I don't know if it would be Director Estruski, where exactly on that city piece of property is the unit going to be sited?
Okay, and I don't know that that, I mean, when you say specific.
A vacant lot, is that the, in front of, is that what we're looking at? Not the fenced-in portion that contains the garage?
Correct. And as we talked about at Plan, the motion was to have TDS move it as far away and back from the one resident that had a concern as they could realistically.
I was looking, I spent two days on the internet. Now, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an electrician, but I can't find anything that indicates that fiber optics are harmful to the environment, to wildlife, to people. In fact, the manufacturer is less carbon-intensive than manufacturing wiring. It's light, not electricity, so there's no radiation. And I, I just couldn't find anything that was negative in terms of effects. I think if it, if they put it where Plan Commission suggested, as far north as they can, and put screening, I noticed that property's got a wooden fence around it as well, and I think, I don't think it should be an issue.
Thank you. Director Lemke, you had some comments?
Yeah. I just forgot what I was thinking.
That's okay. Happens to me all the time. I can go to Alder Dugan if you, why don't you regroup, and I'll go to Alder Dugan.
Yeah, I was moved somewhat by the, the neighbor at 1748 or nearby, her, their comments. And I went by also and took a look at the, the property, the, and I do recall that there doesn't seem to be any really real physical or chemical problem with it, but it could be really annoying to have to have that, you know, next to your fence, and having it as far north, maybe even west as possible, I think that would be a real and having it as far north, maybe even west as possible, I think that would be a real help to those neighbors and to the neighborhood, which is still predominantly residential.
Thank you. Director Lemke.
It came to me.
I saw the light bulb.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple of things, and maybe inconvenient as it is just because of schedules here, but we did, rather than charging for these easements, say we were going to negotiate on infrastructure.
Reciprocating infrastructure, yes.
Everything there has gone, is going, I think is basically done very, very favorably for the city. Wonderful at the table, they, we had some ideas on where to get certain infrastructure, they accepted every bit of that, and instead of taking, you know, a one-time small payment for those easements, so I wanted to throw that out there. They also did, speaking to your point about placement, say that they did have some flexibility there, and the final draft of that reflected a little, a little moving of that around so it's not sitting on the property line. Yeah.
Okay, Alder Jennings.
I know this was discussed at Plan, but could there, just for the benefit of these homeowners, could there be a restatement of the screening, what screening means and what that will look like in terms of blocking the view of that structure?
Without going to the video, I don't know that I can cover that. Let me just see if it's in the minutes.
If one of the directors could just give an example of what that might be.
Director Ostrowski, since you are, your department handles the typical screening, can you just give a brief example of that?
Typically, what we'd see with screening would be arbor vitas that would grow tall to screen the building. I will note that within the, within the easement and the distance for the setback, the setback was over 20 feet to this structure, just comparable what it would be for a single family, you'd likely see about a seven to eight-foot setback for a side yard. So this is considerably farther away from that property line than if a single-family home would be constructed on this lot.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion is to amend the actions of the Plan Commission to, were you directing them to put it in the secured area, Alder?
Correct.
Directing TDS to grant the easement, or to, for the city to grant the easement to TDS in the secured area, which will have to go back to the Plan Commission for reconsideration. So if you are in favor of amending this motion, or the action, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no, and I think we'll get a roll call on this.
Jennings.
No.
Shore.
No.
Nabel.
No.
Zerazua.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Slawinski.
No.
Niebone.
No.
Dugan.
No.
Dalton.
Aye.
Phillips.
No.
Okay, 9-1, the motion fails. We do need action on this, so an appropriate motion, if you agree, would be to accept the minutes and actions of the Plan Commission regarding 1748 Water Street's easement. President Johnson.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the actions, motion and the actions, is that the right, yes.
Approving the easement would be appropriate.
Approving the easement, thank you.
For 14, I'm sorry, 1748 Water Street.
At 1748 Water Street in collaboration with TDS MetroCom LLC.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second by Alder Person Niebone. Let's, since you filled out the paperwork already, let's get a roll call on that. If you are in favor of granting the easement, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no.
Phillips.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Nabel.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
10-0, that motion is approved. Next item that was polled for discussion is the Finance Committee meeting of April 16th, item number two, which is permission from the, for the Community Development Department to apply for a Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant. Director Ostrowski, can you talk about this a little bit?
Actually, I'm just looking for an individual action on this and a roll call vote just so it's clear as we hand to WEDC.
Perfect. So the action, Finance Committee was to approve the application of the grant, we're just looking for an official roll call vote for WEDC. If you, I'm sorry, I guess we need a motion for that. Moved by Shore to approve, seconded by Jennings. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Nabel.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Yes.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
10-0, that is approved. The last item to get polled is the mayoral appointment of the new Parks Director, Daniel Kramer. Alder Phillips, you have the floor, and then we have several people wishing to speak. If you'd like, I can, you could, you know, wait and talk till after everybody's done talking?
That's fine, well, no, I could just make my point.
Okay.
I guess, I thought we said a few years back when some appointments and things and hiring, and we look at our new supposedly new city hall, all of our buildings, all this kind of stuff, I just thought it's inappropriate to, at this time, without looking at all of that and making some decisions about that, would be to delay this until we have some of that stuff nailed down on what we want to do. Right now, it's softier, and that's the only point I wanted to make.
Thank you. And as I mentioned at one of our previous meetings, we always look at efficiencies when there's a major retirement or resignation or someone leaves us to see if there's anything we can do to make things a little more efficient, and we did do that internally to a certain extent. With the speakers list here, we will start with, sorry, I got it, Kate Gullickson?
Kate Gullickson, Facility Supervisor for the Park and Rec Department, 3341 Bridlewood Drive, Plover, Wisconsin. I'm just here for questions. I think it's very impactful for us to put in motion a director at this time. I mean, no, we reviewed everything that Mr. Schrader did over his career, and that's big shoes to fill, and I think that it's very important that we do so in a timely manner. Not to say that, you know, the rest of the Parks Department isn't stepping up, but we need that leadership as well. So I'm just here for questions, just like the other representatives from the parks.
Thank you very much. Next up, Tom Schrader, did I pronounce that correctly?
I didn't plan on being here tonight, and I got in the truck to go to Fleet Farm because that's what retired people do, and I ended up here, so I think my truck brought me here. So I guess I'm here to answer any questions. When I did announce I was going to retire, it came up about joint moving things together, and we looked at it as staff and looked at the procedures. Some of the questions that I know came up from Alderman Phillips in the past were communications and duplication of services and sharing of staff. I mean, I can share all of that with you if you'd like. When it gets to communications, we met generally every Monday and a lot of Wednesdays as directors, so the communications went back and forth there. I usually stop by, and whoever the park director will be will stop by to pick up mail because there is stuff that ends up at City Hall. So you're there basically every day communicating, and nowadays, everybody's got a cell phone which has got all their emails, phones, and everything, so the means of communications, if people say there's a lack of it, it's probably because the staff isn't communicating well enough, or they don't want to. I'll leave it at that. I mean, because communications should be very easy among staff. When it comes to duplication of services, we always hear snow removal, that's the big one. The streets has, I don't know how many miles or roads they clean, but just to let you know, because a lot of times, we're overlooked at the parks. Our crew has about seven miles of sidewalks they clean after every snowfall, four parking lots, which is the winter sports, the Willet, Gerky, and the ski area, and we have the five rinks we got to get ready, and all of those got to get ready for our users. People are paying to use facilities. And when it snows at night and the Willet opens at 6:00 in the morning, people are paying $165 an hour to rent the facility, the parking lot better be plowed. So if we start moving stuff around with priorities, you might get the roads plowed faster, but what happens to the facilities people want to use when they're not ready to be used? So you run into that problem. And it's not like both staffs have nothing to do and people just sitting around. We always say, we get a joke like it's a bullpen. We got people sitting on a bench just waiting for things to do. That's not, that's not the case at all. We share a lot of equipment, dump trucks, loaders. This year, when we had the emergency, when we got done with ours, we contacted DPW and said, hey, if you need any help, let us know. You know, our stuff is done, if you need help, let us know. Garbage pickup is another one. People say, hey, what about garbage? It's two different things. With us, they're curbside, with us, we're in the park. They have to walk to get the cans, so I wouldn't expect the street department to stop, walk and get cans two days a week, it'd really slow them down. But what we did do, though, in the neighborhood parks, if you remember a couple of years ago, when we lost a custodian, we said the neighborhood parks, which we used to have a pickup, we would have the neighbor take it to the curb, and the street department would just pick it up, they were going by anyway. That took some, some working back and forth between departments, but that was done, so there's shared service there. After that, there's very little duplication when we talk about duplicating services. The streets are basically more streets-oriented. When you look at parks, Willet Arena, Sports Center, Ball Diamonds, playground equipment, cutting grass, disc golf, green circle, swimming pool, community stadium, concerts in the park, lodge rentals, riverfront rendezvous, tree trimming, winter sports, programming. I could go on, the differences where there's no duplication at all. And the sharing of staff, we do that quite often, especially in the winter, when they didn't have snow. A couple of years ago, we had cut the contractual services, and part of that cut was when they didn't have snow, the streets guys would come over and help us remove trees. Because you got to remember, in the winter, we lose about a fifth of our staff based on summer, and we still have all the maintenance stuff because we use so many seasonal people. And I would hope, if it doesn't sound like it, but I would hope if you considered not filling the position, you'd keep several things in mind here. How much time would be taken away from both areas if you go with one director? If I worked 40 or 50, 60 hours a week and DPW worked it, I don't know either way who would find all these hours to absorb, to all of a sudden say, I'm taking over the full responsibility of somebody else. People would say you'd have to hire more people. You'd have one person and then hire more, so what have you accomplished by doing that? The educational backgrounds are different. When you looked at, when we, when we applied or solicited this, we were looking for five to seven years of park experience and a degree in park and recreation, quite different than what you looked for two years ago in a public works director. You'd also lose some checks and balances. Years ago, when we did Clark and Main Street, at that time, the city engineer wanted to clear-cut every tree in the boulevard because it would make it easier and make everything level. The Parks Department was the one that fought to save all those trees. You go down Clark and Main now, and I think it would look a lot different if, so you could lose checks and balances when it comes to certain areas, when it comes to something like that. And I think you're looking at two different people with different skill sets. When you look at, like at DPW, they're more in engineering, more in the streets, they deal more with contractors and designs, they don't have as much day-to-day operation, let's say, with the public. When you get into the parks area, there's three departments, completely different, forestry, rec, and parks, or there's completely different departments. You have the programming, advocating the quality of life, you also need to generate revenue, we're one of the few departments that has to bring in revenue. And when I talk to staff about revenue, it's very difficult. I give the example of like a hot water heater. If your hot water heater goes out, you're going to run to Fleet Farm or Frank's and get the hot water heater because you need it and you want it. When it gets to parks and rec, if we don't provide a good service by being out there marketing and doing the rest, if somebody rents a lodge or comes to the park and they don't enjoy it, they're going to go to the Y, they're going to go somewhere else. So to generate revenue, you need that marketing, that person that's there, frontline, and you need somebody that promote the area. So I, I think the skill sets are different, and when we looked at trying to put them together at this time, it just didn't work out real well, and I don't see a lot of real duplication right now. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Okay. And if any has questions, I'll be here, I'll be at Fleet Farm.
Two things I need to point, two things I need to point out. The director kept saying that, you know, like he was still in the trenches with everybody, our crews and our this, I thought that was pretty cool. And secondly, I think the director forgot that citizens are on a timer. We shut it off for you. We figured after 36 years, we could afford you a few, a few more minutes. Next up, we have City Forester Todd Erdster. Todd, do you have anything to add?
Nope, just if anybody has any questions for me, I'm here to answer.
Okay, and I assume the same would hold true then for Scott Halverson? Or do you have comments? Comments, thank you.
Scott Halverson, 3406 Owleen, Wasa. I am your City of Stevens Point Park Superintendent, and I'm here just to show my support for the filling of the director position. I think it's important that we have someone in a leadership role, someone that'll advocate for parks, for trees, for recreation, Willet, and I think it's important that we have that leadership that's required. So, and I'm also here for anybody that has questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, bringing it back to the council, what are your wishes? Alder Jennings.
Those are all very persuasive statements and arguments. However, to make an informed decision, we need to hear the whole thing. And so since there was discussion about putting parks underneath public works, I think we should hear from that side so that we can all make an informed decision and the public understands the full spectrum of this. So can there, could one of the directors?
Okay.
Give their argument, because none of us have heard this.
Okay, we'll get to that in just a second, but I want to go through maybe the process because I thought I did a decent job at the April Personnel Committee meeting, but maybe not. So the process was, after Director Schrader submitted his resignation some, over three months ago now, we talked internally about where we could find efficiencies. Does this make sense? Are there things we can do? And we had those discussions. As a matter of fact, there was a comment made that, what's taking so long? Why haven't we hired a director yet? And it was because it was a process, we were reviewing those things. We made then the recommendation at the April Committee meeting, Personnel Committee meeting, to appoint Director Badun as the interim Parks Director to give us a little more time in the process. Former Parks Director Tom Schrader and I, and along with Lisa, went through all of the applications, picked the ones that we wanted to interview, and then we assembled an interview team to go through and actually interview those. And there was some additional feedback provided at that Personnel Committee meeting. So this is a recording of that, and let's see if we can get this up. That is not what I needed, cancel. We'll get the directors up here shortly, but I want to make sure that we do this.
First, I'm really grateful that Director Schrader is involved in this process, but I just want to make sure that there's, that this, through this process, there's no attempt here to put parks underneath public works. Is that correct?
It's, the plan is to keep parks autonomous.
And that was the feedback that we ran with at that time, last month, to go through the process of hiring somebody. So if there's doubt in someone's mind, one of the alderpersons, as to which direction we're going to go, I would submit that we've had three months to have anyone talk about this. You, most of you actually, were on the council when we created the ordinance, allowing any alderperson to bring any item up for discussion on any agenda. And we are in the 11th hour now, going through the interviews, and now it seems like some of you want to review whether or not we should even have a Parks Director. So I got to say, at the very least, I'm disappointed. I will ask the Director of Public Works now to speak on his thoughts and... And Director of Public Utilities, Alder Jennings, who, who would you like to hear from?
Director of Public Works, and that bit of stagecraft was pretty predictable.
Thank you.
So yes, I would like to hear a balanced approach to this, both sides.
Thank you. Director?
Well, former Director Schrader, you know, makes some valid points as far as that there are any differences. I think the directorship, however, is very much the same. I'm not sure in Tom's experience, and I can't speak for it, you know, how much it is in forestry. We can speak about, you know, checks and balances before, but I've been very much so speculate that our city forester, Todd Ernstur, probably is the one who identified your trees and we coordinate with him every day. I think, in my mind, some of those things would function much easier if we were all one department. I think that communications would actually improve upon where they are, although there are communications. I think it's more so a matter of just having that, and I don't see why having them combined couldn't yet provide the same level of leadership, you know, that they would be looking for. Hopefully, I'm the type of person that people, you know, could be the face of the public to do that. Absolutely no reason why I can't advocate for parks. I like parks, I love trees. Come take a look at my yard, you'll see all the trees I planted. So there's, I don't see there's any reason why it can't be done that way. As far as, you know, how things in my others work, yeah, it would be for me to take on some more work right now. And yeah, it, it will definitely add some hours. I think, maybe in the long run, I think that might otherwise be better. As we look forward, I know we had, had looked through last fall as far as adding staff, one of those staff members on there, which is probably the part of the job that I probably came in to do the most of, and the one I probably have the opportunity to do the least of, which is the engineering. It probably takes the most time. And I think if we follow through on, on that part of it and hire a city engineer here in the next few years, that would alleviate there, I think, the, the pressures that would come along with that, any combination there. And I think making the directorship a very doable project for one person to do both the engineering, the streets and the parks all combined together, and coordinating, coordinating those activities from, from one seat.
Thank you. Alder Nabel?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Badun. I just want to add my thoughts right now, and that is that, yes, we may have as alders the ability to state that we want something different, but that's if you know that's available. And I felt I did not know that this was even a conversation at all about the director maybe taking this on full-time. And so I want to make sure that's understood, is that from Alder Jennings' comments, I don't think she's so off on that, because I had no idea that I could say, or that it was open to us to say, maybe we should look at this and have only one director for the two. So I just want to reiterate the fact that that isn't just common knowledge to all of us, although...
Even though we discussed it at Personnel on April 16?
We didn't discuss that there were, that it could go under one. We only talked about...
Maybe it wasn't clear enough.
Yeah, it wasn't to me.
President Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, everyone, for the discussion. As a director myself, you know, my daytime job, being a director isn't being a specialist. I'm not an engineer, yet I run a solid waste department and I work with engineers, I work with educators. A directorship is really about working with people. So it doesn't necessarily take a, a specific level of expertise. It takes expertise enough to know you don't know what you don't know and get the right people to help you understand that. So I can see both what Director Schrader, former Director Schrader, sorry, and, and Director Badun are saying. I think I understand the level of expertise, and then I also understand building efficiencies. And I completely agree that a city engineer is where we need to go. I think where some of the confusion is, is that it's a communications issue. I think you had a, a direction in your mind that you were going, you had some conversations. I remember having a conversation with you maybe in March-ish or so, that you were thinking about, or at least going to have the discussion about combining. And then it, we, we got busy and we, we didn't meet it like we usually do. Perhaps the best way to do this in the future, and it may be too, too late now, is really, and we could do this even as a city, is to do, have an independent third analysis of where can we gain efficiencies? Sort of the pros and cons of combining departments, mixing staff, you know, cross-training staff from one department to the other. I, I think that's a reasonable thing to ask. I think we're making assumptions that one person can manage two departments. I, I tend to think that that's true, but I also...
Joel's got five.
Huh?
Joel's got five.
Yeah. So yes, the, the overachiever has demonstrated that. But it, I think it's something we should look at and not dismiss out of hand, but rather look at it in a systematic, objective way in evaluating, would you need extra staff? Because we wouldn't want to burn out Director Badun. What would he need those? So it may be too late at this point. So communication issue. And then really, a good third-party independent analysis of our structure and could it be better? Or is it good already?
Thank you. Any other comments? Alder Nebo?
When I was newly graduated with my master's degree in urban planning and looking for work, I would see job postings that said, master's degree in urban planning or landscape architecture.
Yeah, I know.
And I would think, what does a landscape architecture degree have to do with zoning and comprehensive plans and all of that? There may be some efficiencies within the department, but I think the directors should be separate. I, with no disrespect intended to anybody who may not have a degree in park and recreation, doesn't mean that you can't do the job, but someone with that focus and that expertise and those years of experience, you can't really pay for that. That's something that you hope to find.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Alder Dugan?
Well, because I was gone for Personnel and on vacation and didn't look at the video, this is a complete surprise to me. However, I'm just reminded from Alder Nebo's analogy of, you know, what, what does landscape, you know, architecture have to do with planning and zoning? Well, if some of us might remember, in the not-too-distant past, we had a planner who didn't have a planning degree, and we now have one that does. And in my view, that makes all the difference.
Thank you. Any other comments? Director Limpke?
Just briefly, if there's anything to kind of look back at and kind of ask if it worked well or if it hasn't, there's, it's easy to forget how much change we've been under in the last 10, 12, somewhere in there, years. Eight to 12, I suppose it is. Because I don't think there's a lot of people who, maybe one or two here, who've been through the changes that have happened in the departments and the structure, and the, I don't think the results have been poor. So, you know, we can discuss the merits of the title of the position, if you want, but I would, I would point out that if you're concerned about dissimilar things in a department, I think that public works, as it used to exist, had more dissimilar things in it than what this would entail. And back before 2012, transit and airport were both part of public works, when I was a, when I was the public works director. Back before 2008, the sanitary sewer collection system was maintained by the Streets Department. And before 2013, the stormwater collection system was maintained by the Streets Department. So if we're wondering about dissimilar things landing together, I think all the dissimilar things have been removed, and to, to a great quantity. So you could ask yourself, how much, like this, is wastewater collection, stormwater collection, transit and airport? How much is that in your head compared to the Parks Department as a whole? I, I can't maybe quantify that for you, as far as, if you want to look at employees or infrastructure or budget or anything like that, those are very easy things to quantify. But quantifying them in a more, what's it take type thing isn't so easy, but I, I wouldn't be worried about it being dissimilar, more so than what has existed in the past.
Thank you. And I think we, we've covered a lot of those things over the years. When a director retires or, or leaves for some reason, we look at, where is there room for improvement? When Director Halverson retired from the Water Department, when we had the Director of Public Works retire, in my tenure, happened a couple of times where they left. We look at, what can we do better? Sometimes there's things we can do better. Sometimes there's not. And that's why we review those, and that's why we review that with this position as well. I'm, I'm, again, I'm going back to the, the internal reviews here. I don't know that a third-party expert is better than the people who actually do the job. What can we do better here? They'll give us a different perspective, so it's something we can look at in the future, but we talked about it internally, the people who are actually doing the jobs, the people who are sharing the duties and those sorts of things. So we, we have reviewed this. Because it's a former Parks Director, and he had his hand up, I'm going to ask Director, former Director Schrader to afford him the opportunity to make any additional comments that he needs to.
I would like to say that the, years ago, the Parks Department was under the Streets Department. That was two directors before me, and they moved it out because of the importance of the Parks Department and separation and making it what it is today. So I'm not saying it's going to go backwards, but that's already been tried once. It didn't work. I don't think any of you knew that in here. It's just two different sets of priorities. And you could say, well, I can make all the priorities work, but it's going to always come down to, what are you more loyal to? And you have a park system here now that is one of the best in the state. And I think it's going to continue to be that way if you have somebody that's a true advocate for parks and parks only, and works that way towards it. And I think that's very important. Could you combine? Could you do? Sure. But you're going to end up hiring more people. So if you're, if you're doing this to save money, that's not what's going to happen. And you're also going to lose the connection with all the special interest groups that I deal with, because somebody else is may not going to be there at four nights, five nights a week with this group, with that group, dealing with them on weekends coming in. So just keep that in mind, too. Thanks.
Alder Shore, you had your hand up as well?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to take a moment and quickly say that this question sounds like, you know, it definitely has arguments on both sides. And I appreciate that, to some extent, that they were hashed through and, and got us to this point. But I would also, I guess, join with the others in saying that, in, you know, looking back, it would have been better for, for us to have had more of that discussion ourselves.
Thank you. I'm going to point out one more time that by ordinance, as directed by the Common Council of the City of Stevens Point, any alder can bring any item for discussion whenever they want. So in the future, if there's something you have questions on, contact the directors, contact myself, ask your questions. If I think, if you think it warrants discussion at the council level, then ask. We had three months with silence, so we assumed that we were on the path to follow, not to mention the comment that was made at the Personnel Committee meeting, which seemed to put up the wall that they, that at least that person was against it. One more comment in the back, John Quirk?
I just want to say, as a member of the public, that I'm really disappointed that you're even talking about this. This is not on the agenda tonight. You proved this months ago. You ran the ads, you took applications, you interviewed people, you offered the job to somebody and they accepted tentatively. And the agenda item is the appointment of a specific person, and we've been talking about this for 20 minutes and haven't even mentioned that person. What you're talking about is not on the agenda. And I'm really disappointed that if this was even an issue, it should have been an agenda item. I didn't register to speak because I didn't know that you were going to talk about whether or not you should fill a position that you've already taken applications for, for a, for a person who gave his notice three months ago. That, that's really, really disconcerting. Not to mention the fact that, with all due respect, some of these people have no idea what goes on in that office. I've sat across from that office for 27 years, and there is no way that anybody can tell me that they have the time to run the Streets Department with all the trouble that that department has. We just had a special meeting talking about that. And there's no way they can have time to do that and run the best Parks Department in the state. There's no way. But at, at the very least, this should be, this should, you shouldn't even be talking about this.
Thank you.
I'm really disappointed that you haven't called Point of Order or something.
Thank you. And I will address that, because I talked about that with the city attorney here today. And I will let the city attorney explain the comments that he made.
Well, I think certainly if, if the item is whether or not to appoint somebody to a position, and somebody is, wants to discuss whether you should take that action at this time, the reasons for or against doing so are well within the bounds of, of the discussion. I don't think that, I don't think it would be in order to attempt a motion or take an action to do some sort of realignment of departments on that basis, but to say, I want to move to do something here in order to allow time to consider that more fully, I think that would be in order. But I think the conversation has been well within bounds.
Thank you. And after the discussions with the city attorney, that's why I allowed the discussion to continue. We've got a bunch more hands now. So, and Alder Slawinski, we'll just go right to left.
I guess, I share your frustration that we're talking about this in, in the final hour. I, I don't, I don't understand why this wasn't brought forth in the last few months. I mean, I'm, I'm very disappointed. Seems like every month, you know, I've sat in these meetings for many years, and every month, it's, when we're talking about purchasing things or, or making decisions, one of the top things that comes up is, we want to support quality of life in this community. Comes up all the time. I don't understand why would we even consider combining these departments? I mean, the Parks Department offers such an amazing quality of life in our community. Why would we want to hinder that? And by, I don't think we're going to save money if, if we were to go down this road, because moving forward, I mean, again, Director Badun, he's going to need some help in his department to, to shoulder the burden. So again, I, I don't understand why we're talking about it. And with that being said, I'm going to move to approve the mayoral appointment of new Parks Director Daniel Kramer.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second by Alder Person Nabel?
Yep.
Further discussion? I know there were some hands up. We'll go to Alder Nabel and then Alder Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to state that I was not against voting for this right away. It was polled by somebody, and I was just saying that I did not realize that there was any issue about making a decision other than what we had. And I just wanted to reiterate that part, that I must have misunderstood in Personnel. But I have no issue with this, and I would like to second that, we approved this appointment.
Thank you, Alder Nabel. Alder Jennings?
Yeah, I'll certainly accept the, the criticisms being made, but in defense of myself, I would rather make the right decision, informed by a staff discussion and a staff debate that is on both sides, rather than just rubber stamp something that comes forward. This discussion has enabled me to make a firm decision that the Parks Director is the right decision, and this discussion confirms that, that I am making the absolute right decision with that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alder Dugan?
Yeah, I have to say that, that I feel the way, the way Mr. Quirk has felt, that I am surprised and saddened that, that this has come up in this way. And yet I also agree with Alder Jennings... And yet I also agree with Alder Jennings, that certainly from my part, I needed the discussion on both sides. All of us did. We didn't have it enough before now. And I understand that I'm not the only one, just because I went on vacation, but there are a lot of others who needed to hear earlier and needed to discuss it earlier. And now having heard both sides, and very fully, with excellent examples and reasoning, I too will vote for the new director.
Thank you. And just a comment on that, we did have that discussion. I understand that maybe everybody didn't know about it, but at least two people on council knew about it over a month ago. So you had a pretty darn good excuse being out of the area, and Alder Morrow has those excuses tonight. But we will do a better job of trying to let you know what's going on internally and having those balanced discussions with the directors. It's just it wasn't done with the council present. That was something that we did internally, brought it to Personnel, waited for some feedback, but regardless, we are where we are now. We're going to do a better job next time. Alder Phillips. And then we have our HR manager, who's been chomping at the bit, and I apologize for having that back to you, and our comptroller treasurer.
Just Lisa.
Oh, just Lisa, sorry.
Lisa.
Gotcha. Alder Phillips?
After hearing all the comments and everything, I'm not so sure that one guy's enough to fill Tom's shoes. So we'll look at it that way, okay?
Thank you. Lisa? While she's walking up, I will be, I'll just say that I'm glad none of the comments were directed at Daniel Kramer. I think he's a very well-qualified candidate, as did the interview team. We had a lot of really good candidates. So I'm glad that everybody seems to be okay with that.
First of all, I wanted to apologize if there was any confusion coming out of the April 8 Personnel Committee meeting. After that meeting, I felt more sure than at any point up until that time that the whole city council approved going forward and filling the position. We also included in the process, in the interview process, one of the Park Board members. So I would certainly hope that in the future, if there is discussion about changing in an organization, including perhaps the Park Board, would be also an important thing to do. Just a couple of things about the recruitment. We did receive 46 applications. Seven people were interviewed. Part of the interview committee was the President or the Park Board.
President of the Parks Commission.
Okay, President of the Parks Commission. He participated in the interviews. The mayor was in on the interviews, as was I, and former County Park Director Gary Speckman. Dan Kramer was our number-one candidate. So I am concerned that, you know, he couldn't be here this evening, and I think that perhaps it's better, because had he heard the debate, he might be thinking, what am I getting myself into? And so I would urge, you know, all of the alders, I think the majority of us put it in our cover memos, if you have questions or concerns, please feel free to contact us. We're staff, we're here Monday through Friday, you know, seven to four. Contact us if you have questions, if you have concerns. You don't have to wait till there's an official meeting or council. Please feel free to contact us, so perhaps we can avoid some of these misunderstandings in the future. You know, I think, you know, maybe because Tom had been in his role for so many years, he had learned many shortcuts, as you do, and was able to accomplish a lot of things. He obviously has a strong support staff who helped with some of those things. So I just want to make sure that, you know, our new employee will start off on the right foot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to affirm the new Parks Director, Daniel Kramer. If you are in favor, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no, and we'll have the clerk call the roll. Phillips?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Niebel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Ten zero, that is adopted. The second actionable item on our agenda is a resolution for a conditional use permit at 2932 Alice Court. Utilize the traditional neighborhood development overlay district standards for a reduced setback to construct an addition. We have a representative of the applicant available for questions if needed. Alder Phillips?
I'd like to move approval of that resolution.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Person Dalton, discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no. Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Ten zero, that's adopted. Item number nine is a resolution for a conditional use permit at 4501 Highway 66 to construct a hangar at the airport. We have no one wishing to speak. President Johnson?
Motion to approve the resolution for a conditional use permit to build a hangar at the airport.
Thank you. We'll give the second to Alder Person Niebone. She had her hand up first. Everybody shoots up for the second. Nobody wants to do the first. Any discussion there?
At the airport.
Alder Dugan?
Yeah, this is a property in my district, so I thought I should speak up and let you know, and some of you do, I think, already, that there is a neighbor nearby, or will be much closer by when this is built, who does have concerns about the trees and her home value, drainage, light pollution, et cetera. I went to the property today and talked to some of the staff who knew what was going on, although not with Mr. Scafidi, but those who knew. And they are indeed going to try to save more of the trees, although the design doesn't quite show that. I'm hoping to encourage them to save as many of the, you know, the current trees as you can. If I could change planning and zoning policies and rules, I would ask that every resident, whether it's an apartment or, you know, a single-family home, have a good-sized green buffer between itself and any commercial use, including, I mean, this is going to be a body shop, you know, for automobiles, so.
Talking about the airport.
I think we're talking about two different things here.
Yeah, well, yeah. We're talking about Don Scafidi, right?
No, we're talking about building a hangar at the airport.
The hangar.
I'm so sorry!
That's okay.
The hangar's in my district also, and I am a supporter.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no. The clerk will call the roll. Phillips?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Ten zero. Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number 10 is a public hearing to amend the City of Stevens Point's Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for the purposes of amending the future land use designation from residential to multifamily three-plus units at 800 Whiting Avenue. Director, do you have anything you want to add before we open the public hearing? Okay. And with that, I will declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to offer testimony on this request, step forward, name an address for the record.
I am the landowner, looking for that amendment change. The zoning change is for future. Me and my wife are building our future retirement home in Iowa, Wisconsin. We'll be moving there in another year or so. I don't feel it's a residential or any anymore. It was commercial at one time when I bought, that was Norm Johnson Asphalt Products Office Building when I originally bought that, converted it back to a home. But it's really not an area that I would say that's prime location to build a beautiful home. I would say it's got definitely a value for it for duplexes or whatever would be decided to be built there. So just for resale value, that's why I'm going for the change. This way here, if somebody's interested in purchasing that property, they would know it already has passed. This way here, they're not sure, so they'll be more hesitant to either purchase it or what they're going to pay for it. So I'm just looking for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing remains open. Public hearing is still open. For the third time, the public hearing is open. For those of you smiling, we have to say it three times. Hearing no one else wishing to speak, I will declare the public hearing closed, and we will move on to item number 11, which is the ordinance amendment relating to the city's Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and the amendment for the future land use designation from residential to multifamily three-plus units at 800 Whiting Avenue. Alder persons, what are your wishes? Alder Dalton?
I would move to approve the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan map from the two multifamily at 800 Whiting Avenue.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Phillips, discussion? Hearing none. If you're in favor, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no. And we'll get a roll call, please. Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Ten zero. Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number 12 is an ordinance amendment for rezoning 800 Whiting Avenue from our two single-family residents to our four multifamily one residence district. Mr. Pietrowski, you did register to speak. Do you have any additional comments, or you just want to be there as a resource? Just a resource? Okay. Alder persons, what are your wishes? Alder Dalton?
Move to approve the rezoning at 800 Whiting Avenue.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Niebone. Any discussion there? Hearing none. Let's get a roll call, please. Phillips?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Ten zero. Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number 13 is a resolution for a conditional use permit at 3733 Stanley Street to construct another building on a lot for vehicular and automobile repair within the Wellhead Protection B District. Alder Dugan, do you have a comment?
About that airport.
Not about that airport. This is about the body shop. And as I said, I went out there and talked to people, and it looks like it's going to be a good development. And I think that the neighbor across the street, with some assistance from the Scafidi people, will probably have her concerns mitigated somewhat. So I am voting to or make a move to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by President Johnson. We do have two people who were registered to speak. Looks like they're representing Scafidi Motors. Do you want to have comments, or are you just here for reference if we need it?
Just for reference.
Just for reference, okay. With that, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the alders? Hearing none. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no, and the clerk will call the roll. Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number 14 is a resolution to modify a planned district development plans for 111 Division Street North. We do have someone wishing to speak. It looks like only if there's questions, so we have a resource if there are any questions. Alder persons, what are your wishes? Alder Phillips?
Move approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by President Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing Alder Dalton?
I would just like to bring up that I will not be voting in favor of this modified, and I would really like to refer this back to committee. My feeling since being elected and participating in the discussions of these plans is that they've been misleading to the public and that there has been a slight abuse of the closed-session meetings and the conversations that have been discussed around this specific proposal. Examples that I can point to, in the public media, Mr. Mayor, you were quoted saying that the project had reduced in scope, when neither the capacity of it nor the financial incentive that we are looking to offer for this project had in fact been. And I think that a lot of the conversations did not need to take place. This developer owns the property. It does not put the city in a, the city's bargaining position does not require a closed session. And the limitations that we have for those closed-session conversations are strict for a reason, because these projects and developments and plans are to be for, open for public scrutiny. And the feeling is if they're not able to withstand public scrutiny from, you know, comments from the public, then, you know, we should be taking that first and foremost as the interest of the city.
Thank you. Alder, I want to point out that you have resources available, and I, maybe I wasn't clear on that, but if you have questions about projects, you can talk to the directors. If you have legal questions, you can talk to our city attorney, who verifies the agendas before they go out, to make sure that we are following the law. The stand, and I'll let the city attorneys correct me if I'm wrong, but the stand on these closed sessions with negotiations is, we are negotiating with incentive packages. And if we did that in open session, and we said, we're going to go up to no more than $5, the developer now knows that we'll go up to $5, so that's their starting point.
Yep.
That's why that stuff is in closed session. And I'll let the city attorney speak to anything else, because that, it's concerning that that accusation was made.
Well, I have spoken to Alder Person Dalton about this, and my understanding, based on that conversation, is that her concerns lied more with the level of detail that was included in the agenda item. We had a productive conversation about that. With regards to the content of the closed sessions themselves, I certainly think that they were, that they were confined to the appropriate subject matter. And certainly, everything with regards to this project, when voted on, has been done so publicly, with all the materials relevant to the project made wholly available to the public well in advance of those votes.
Thank you. And Alder Person, maybe I stuck on the wrong words. I heard you say that you had issues, concerns about the closed-session items, among other things, but...
Yeah, I believe, I did talk with Director Strousky and Attorney Beveridge about this, and that notice saying that there's discussion about a potential proposal in a TIF district does not indicate to the public who the bargaining parties are, what the property is, and when we are as far along with the development and having a developer's agreement, you know, a discussion about feeling out a new plan for it does not seem to me to be, fall within the bounds of what a closed-session item would entail. So part of it, yes, was the discussion of noticing in the agenda, and part of it then is our conduct in the closed-session conversations remaining strictly within the bounds of what those conversations are supposed to be about.
Okay, thank you. And if there's a way we can improve that, we are definitely open to that. But I just wanted to be clear that we are above board when it comes to what we're doing[1642.08]
or right away perimeter landscape screening may be waived. That had dealt with, the example that we brought up was Pacelli looking to reconstruct their lot where they have an athletic field that separates their lot from the adjacent neighbor that's, I think it was nearly almost 300 feet. Our feeling is that the perimeter landscaping around that lot wouldn't really do it much good. Quite honestly, it'd probably be overly burdensome on some of the developments that we'd be doing and it wouldn't really serve the purpose that we're trying to intend here with screening and providing good separation because that distance, that setback that would be required anyway is providing that separation between there. They still would be required to provide landscaping where, let's say, didn't have that separation adjacent to the street, screening those parking lot areas, but in these rare instances where we run into situations like Pacelli, having the zoning administrator having some flexibility to work within the zoning code to waive certain perimeter planning where it makes sense to waive is what we're looking to change here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, what are your wishes, Alder Nable?
I move to approve.
Thank you, do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Dalton. Discussion? Alder Dugan.
Yeah, I too would support this, but I also have been for years now pleased with the way our city takes seriously the screening of parking lots, which are huge asphalt fields. And if for no other reason than aesthetics, good screening, I think, is imperative. So I don't want us to go down the road of wavering, waving too far.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Nable.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Yes.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Yes.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Nable.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Nine one.
Nine one, that is approved. Item number 15 is a resolution for a conditional use permit at 111 Division Street North. Multiple buildings on a lot, reduced setbacks within bid tid five district and multiple family dwelling units. President Johnson.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Alder Person Jennings. Discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Nable.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Yes.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Ten zero.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number 16 is an ordinance amendment for Chapter 23 of the zoning ordinance with the revised municipal code specifically Section 23.02 Sub 1 Sub E regarding minimum lot size requirements. Alder Dalton.
Move to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Alder Shore. Discussion there? Alder Dalton.
I'm just, I want to commend the department for their work here. I'm really happy to see this and I've already had people, multiple people contacting me who are in the house hunting mode and we're happy to hear about this as an opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, if you are in favor, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no. Clerk?
Phillips.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Yes.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Nable.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Nine one.
Nine one, that is approved. Item number 15 is a resolution for a conditional use permit at 111 Division Street North. Multiple buildings on a lot, reduced setbacks within bid tid five district and multiple family dwelling units. President Johnson.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Alder Person Jennings. Discussion? Alder Dugan.
I move to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Alder Person Niebone. Discussion? Alder Dugan.
I too would support this, but I also have been for years now pleased with the way our city takes seriously the screening of parking lots, which are huge asphalt fields. And if for no other reason than aesthetics, good screening, I think, is imperative. So I don't want us to go down the road of wavering, waving too far.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Nable.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Yes.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Ten zero.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number 16 is an ordinance amendment for Chapter 23 of the zoning ordinance with the revised municipal code specifically Section 23.02 Sub 1 Sub E regarding minimum lot size requirements. Alder Dalton.
Move to approve.
Thank you, seconded by Alder Shore. Discussion there? Alder Dalton.
I just want to commend the department for their work here. I'm really happy to see this and I've already had people, multiple people contacting me who are in the house hunting mode and we're happy to hear about this as an opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, if you are in favor, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no.
Phillips.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Nable.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Ten zero, that is approved.
Item number 17 is an ordinance amendment, again, Chapter 23 of the zoning ordinance of the revised municipal code specifically Section 23.01 Sub 14 regarding parking lot screening. Alder Nable.
Could I be given what page that's on in here and a little more information?
Sorry, I usually do that, but I was a little swamped at work today. Let's see here. 130.
Could you give a little bit of, could the director give a little?
I would be happy to have the director come up here. We did talk about this at the Plan Commission, but Director, you just want to give us a brief overview again?
The change regarding this has to deal with the fourth bullet point. It says where parking areas have 100 feet of separation between adjacent properties or right away perimeter landscape screening may be waived. That had dealt with, the example that we brought up was Pacelli looking to reconstruct their lot where they have an athletic field that separates their lot from the adjacent neighbor that's, I think it was nearly almost 300 feet. Our feeling is that the perimeter landscaping around that lot wouldn't really do it much good. Quite honestly, it'd probably be overly burdensome on some of the developments that we'd be doing and it wouldn't really serve the purpose that we're trying to intend here with screening and providing good separation because that distance, that setback that would be required anyway is providing that separation between there. They still would be required to provide landscaping where, let's say, didn't have that separation adjacent to the street, screening those parking lot areas, but in these rare instances where we run into situations like Pacelli, having the zoning administrator having some flexibility to work within the zoning code to waive certain perimeter planning where it makes sense to waive is what we're looking to change here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, what are your wishes, Alder Nable?
I move to approve.
Thank you, do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Dalton. Discussion? Alder Dugan.
Yeah, I too would support this, but I also have been for years now pleased with the way our city takes seriously the screening of parking lots, which are huge asphalt fields. And if for no other reason than aesthetics, good screening, I think, is imperative. So I don't want us to go down the road of wavering, waving too far.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Nable.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Yes.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Ten zero, that's adopted.
Item number 18 is an ordinance amendment for Chapter 23 of the revised municipal code, this time specifically Section 23.02 Sub 1 Sub E to allow the use of tourist rooming houses as a permitted or conditional use within the R3 single and two-family zoning district. Alder Dugan.
Yeah, I would move to approve this ordinance amendment and then I would like to make a comment.
Thank you, do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Person Nable.
And I'd also like to make a comment.
Okay, we'll go back to Alder Dugan, then Alder Nable, then Alder Jennings.
Yes. Yes, I even, I will even support tourist rooming houses in two-family residence zoning areas, which the last time I was talking about this with the group, we weren't considering, but I understand why that might work. I do, however, think that in time, not right now, but perhaps in the future, maybe next month, we could bring a couple of restrictions forward on this. I want us to put in writing, if not in the code somewhere, some way to protect the health and safety of tourist rooming house guests. And one way to do that, and I think we've talked about this in the past, is to follow the state law. And there is a good law. Wisconsin state lodging license would be required for TRHs. They are required, that's how they become legal. And that includes an inspection by a state-certified sanitarian, whether that person would come from Madison or from the county. I don't know, they would arrange that themselves. The county also requires a state license for tourist rooming houses out in the country and in the villages. And they require also a permit or a license from a political division, then that would be us. So we need to give a permit or a license to tourist rooming houses and they need to follow the health and safety rules of the state. There are other restrictions that I would certainly be, would like to discuss too, and I think Alder Nable brought up one, which is if we're going to have them in R2 districts, how many can we have? Do we want two or three, four on the block? Probably not. And would there be a way for staff or is there a way that the state would help us perhaps find a reasonable number? So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Just to be clear, any rooming houses would be already required to follow any federal, state, and local laws.
Yeah.
So if there's requirements and inspections, they will be forced to do that now. We don't need to add any additional restrictions in that regard.
No, we wouldn't.
But if there are things that you would like to consider in the future, or Alder Nable, or any of the Alder persons, even members of the public, contact the director and have that discussion and we can get it on a future agenda item.
But one thing that we could do is make sure, certain that the tourist rooming houses have got that state license and in other words, they have to verify it to us.
Okay, thank you. Alder Nable and then Alder Jennings.
Thank you. I just was questioning, I had heard that I had to leave when this was being voted on and it was within the R3 single and did it also pass, or it was mentioned to add it to the R2?
No, it's just R3 as it stays in the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Jennings and then Alder Shore.
To that point, I distinctly remember in the conversation that why not open this up to everybody or to all of the designations? And I concluded from that discussion, from what Michael Ostrowski said, that yes, that's a good idea. So I actually expected it to be altered in this and so I'm wondering, is it going to come forward next month?
Yeah, seems there's always some miscommunication. Maybe we're not clear enough at our other meetings, but I'll have the director speak to this.
Now, so the way the item was noticed in the public hearing requirements that we have to publish prior to the Plan Commission was specifically for this district. Now typically within zoning, you're able to go to higher classification districts. You know, for example, you know, if we noticed it for R3 districts and then it would pertain to R4, R5, B1, B2, B3, but you can't go down because people in the R2 district had no knowledge that this may occur within their district. So what we have done is we have noticed it for the next Plan Commission to go at the lowest classification of residential districts to have that discussion at the Plan Commission where we would like to see this put in the lowest residential classification. So it will come back for our next Plan Commissions, but because of the way it was noticed for the public hearing at the Plan Commission, we couldn't put it in a lower classification. So the thought at the Plan Commission was that this would proceed in the R3 as directed at Plan Commission and then come back next month for consideration in lower districts.
Thank you for that clarification.
Good. Alder Dugan?
Just, so for clarification, I must have misunderstood that. So this, we're not talking about R2 now.
Correct.
We will next month.
This is for R3 and above. R2 and below would be discussed next month.
Exactly, yes.
But again, contact the directors, provide that input so we can have it prepared for the meeting, so we're not getting... fielding things out of the blue. And we can have a chance to do some research on it and make sure that we're doing the right thing. Okay, we do have a motion and a second. If you are in favor of the ordinance amendment, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. I'm sorry, I completely forgot about you. Alder Shore, my fault.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to speak a moment on R2, which is what most of my district is, and I did speak to this at Plan Commission, I am in favor of extending it to R2. I look at it partly related to our shortfall in tourist capacity in rooms. But even more, I look at this as a good income-earning option for people to have. And that's my main concern here and my main reason for favoring. And I would not really favor or would have questions about the practicality of trying to limit the number, you know, in terms of on a particular block or a maximum, you know, number of nights per year. For me, the main... the most important thing, and it's here, and I'd be looking for it in R2 as well, is the owner-occupied piece. I think that that's really the single important sort of check in the system for this.
Thank you. And yeah, and we got the sense when we talked about this at Plan Commission that people were in favor generally of bringing that R2 designation forward. I'm getting the same sense here that I think, and I'm just probably being over-cautious now, but I think we're going to have some discussion on this next month for R2 classifications. Again, if there are things that you think should or should not be put in as restrictions, contact staff sooner rather than later so we can get that incorporated when we bring the product forward. Anyone else wishing to speak? Alder Dugan, one more time.
The last time. Regarding restrictions and...
Alder, I'm going to ask that you save the restriction comments for a later date. We're going to talk about the R3 zoning as proposed. Alder Niebone?
I'm a little confused here. It says on the agenda that we're looking at changing it to within the R3, but if you look at Page 132, it mentions permitted uses in R2.
That's why I'm confused.
And under conditional uses, is that a typo?
I think it might be.
Director?
Is... Because I'm in support. I just want to make sure.
That's why I have that.
That we're...
Oh, I think it...
No, so what happens within our ordinance? So this is under the R3 section. So this is the permitted uses within the R3 districts include the permitted uses that are within R2.
Specifically, Section 23.01, paren for... nope. 1E. 23.02, sorry.
Yeah, so anything permitted in 2 is also permitted in 3.
Yes.
That's why the R2 is in here.
Right, right.
The whole ordinance is in there, right.
Make sure everybody...
All right.
Yeah, that's it.
Think we got her. Any other comments? Okay, if you're in favor, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Phillips?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
9-1, that is adopted. Item number 19 is an ordinance amendment, Chapter 9 for traffic, Sub 05 for accessible parking, and Sub 12 for bicycle ways. What are your wishes? President Johnson?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Niebone. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
10-0, that is adopted. Item number 19 is an ordinance amendment, Chapter 9 for traffic, Sub 05 for accessible parking, and Sub 12 for bicycle ways. What are your wishes? President Johnson?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Niebone. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
10-0, that is adopted. Item number 20 is a developer's agreement between Delta Dental of Wisconsin and the city of Stevens Point for a corporate headquarters development at 2000 Business Park Drive with parcels outlined there located in tax incremental financing District 9. Director, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Only if there's questions.
Only if there's questions. We also have Dennis Peterson here, who is representing Delta Dental. Mr. Peterson, you have the floor. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Dennis Peterson. Our business is located at 2801 Hoover Road. My personal residence is E 1185 Pleasant Park Lane in Wapaka. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for allowing me to come and actually engage in this proceeding. It was fun tonight, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. This is my 41st year at Delta Dental after I walked off the campus at UWSP, and it's been an exciting 41 years. We have called... Delta Dental of Wisconsin has called Stevens Point Home for over 50 years. Tonight, I'm here to ask you for your support to continue our great partnership with this community. With our growth in recent years, we've outgrown our current location, and as you're probably aware, had to lease space downtown to house a pretty large number of our employees. That distance between our two locations has posed some challenges and prompted us to look at options to meet the long-term needs of our organization and our employees. As you know, we are in the process of evaluating how we can best meet the needs of our growing business and work in an efficient work environment for many years to come. I can't emphasize enough, we would certainly like to stay within the city. Central Wisconsin is our home. One thing I would like to clarify is an issue that was raised at the Finance Committee meeting last week. It was stated that Delta Dental is a large national company, and it can be confusing. While Delta Dental of Wisconsin is a member of the nationwide Delta Dental system, each Delta Dental, including Delta Dental of Wisconsin, operates independently and is governed by our own Board of Directors. Delta Dental of Wisconsin is a Wisconsin-based company that is headquartered here in Stevens Point.